Will be given by Pastor David Johnson with Trinity United Methodist Church. Pastor, if you'd like to come forward, please. Everyone, please silence your cell phones. We are in session. And if you please will join me in standing for the pledge to our nation's flag along with our dedication.
Let us pray. Holy One known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life and Spirit of love, we come to you today. We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Bless them with courage, Lord, courage to speak with conviction and courage to speak with hope. And give them hope, Lord, in these times when cynicism is the mood of the day, that they may lead with hope the people of this city. That they may be transparent leaders who guide us toward a brighter future. God, we pray that you would grant them with conviction and humility. Let them hold tight to the things that, to the strongest beliefs in their hearts, but let them hold them with humility that they may work together even when they differ, remembering that all are seeking the common good. Help them to ask the right questions, not just first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to learn and how might we need to change and to whom do we need to listen? Lord, you know, the right questions so often lead to better answers, to the right answers, to the answers that help the most and do the most good. So, God, help them to ask the right questions. Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate, that they are not only leaders but also servants and that their responsibility and ours is to serve the common good of all. Grant them and us wisdom to see the people behind the problems that they debate, to see the stories behind the minutes in the meetings. Lord, remind them and us that it's more than just issues, but that there are people's lives behind it all. And let all of us work together for that good and for that better community and for that brighter future which you have called us to and hope. And in the Spirit of love, let us be guided this day and hereforth. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Proton Philshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Gitts.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Mumutong.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations or recognitions today. So, I will call now for public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comment on scheduled agenda items one through three or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to speak on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer. She will fill out your name, call out your name, excuse me. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you'd like to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. But right now it's for one through three or the consent agenda.
I don't have any, Mayor.
I saw someone go get a green slip. Sir, was that for the consent agenda or one through three?
I have it, but it was for public comments.
Okay, so there's none. Okay, all right, I'll close the floor. Counsel, can I have a motion, please, for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
With regard to item C, could I get a little bit more clarification of exactly what this agenda item is about?
Okay, so I did mean to mention our city manager is out of town today. So Attorney Cooper will be filling in his spot and Bart will, Mr. Bakhoviac, sorry, will answer this question.
I figured Tyrone's gonna punt it to me anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Basically, years back, we had entered into an agreement with TechDOT to do an expansion or widening of Old Allen Road in addition to creating a new connection to 105. At that time, it was, I think, five million dollars, whatever the original price was in here. And the local district was using what they termed discretionary funds to fund their part of it. So, a lot of years have gone by. Now here we sit, we've already rehabbed Old Allen, didn't widen it. The project's gonna cost much, much greater than what this is and there are no funds on hand by TechDOT. It's not like it's an earmark or some sort of bank account where those funds exist. The local district gets maybe two and a half, three million dollars a year. Even to fund what they had in this, they'd have to try to gather funds over multiple years. So, we felt it was best to just close this out. If we want to come back later and actually initiate this project or another one, just create another agreement with the local office and negotiate at that time.
Okay, so right now there's no current plans to widen the road. I know that it's been overlaid and it looks good, but we're gonna keep it at its, as wide as it is right now.
For now, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? There being none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item number one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is for council to consider a resolution approving a five-year lease purchase agreement related to the purchase of a fire truck. On December the eighth of 2020, council approved a reimbursement resolution for the lease purchase agreement to reimburse the city for the purchase of a fire pumper truck. Bids were solicited from eighteen vendors for a fixed interest rate to finance the truck and we have received three responses. Signature Public Funding Corp. of Townsend, or Tolson, I guess it is, Tolson, Maryland, submitted a bid with an interest rate of 1.68%. The total lease purchase cost, including interest, would be $796,280.80. And funds will be budgeted in the FY22 Budget Capital Reserve Fund and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading out of number one. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number two, please.
Item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept funding for the water plant electrical building floodproofing project through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The proposed project is to floodproof the electrical control building located at the water plant, 2550 Pine Street, to prevent the city from experiencing a long-term loss of treated water due to any future flood or storm damage. The city would receive $577,359.75 in mitigation funding. State will provide an additional $144,339.94, leaving the city responsible for $48,113.31. And these funds are available in the capital program and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
No, to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Councilman Neeld and Gitts, okay. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
During Hurricane Harvey, how close did this building come to flooding? It was pretty close but did not flood, is that right?
You're asking me the question, yes.
Well, I know you were out there, so.
Yeah, it was close. We had to sandbag it and fire police and many of our staff got out there and sandbagged it. So, it didn't really get close because it was sandbagged. So, we don't know if it would have flooded, but it was coming close.
Well, I definitely think it's appropriate that we take advantage of this grand opportunity. The city's portion is relatively small compared to what the total cost is. I think we would be well-served to do this.
Totally agree.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, and for the sake of our citizens, the primary component in this floodproofing is a retaining wall. They may not understand that, but we're talking about putting a retaining wall around the building itself, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that building is, contains the majority of the electrical and everything that makes the plant work, because we do know that we had flooding in other areas. But this is a, it's not a very big building, but it is very important. So, yes, that's correct. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, thanks. All in favor of the motion for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries also unanimously. Item number three, please.
Item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Global Emergency Services LLC of Beaumont for the Lawson's Canal Reclamation Debris Hauling Project. On December the 31st of 2020, three bids were received for the furnishing of labor and materials and equipment for the project, which consists of hauling and disposal of 9,000 cubic yards of backfill, existing vegetation and construction debris located at Marina Drive. The bids were solicited in two ways, a base bid and an alternate bid. The base bid was for the hauling and disposal, assuming the city staff would perform the excavation and loading of the material. The alternate bid was for a turnkey project, which consists of excavation, loading, hauling, disposal of existing vegetation, backfill material and construction debris, and a final grading of the site. Water utility staff is recommending accepting the bid, the alternate bid, of Global Emergency Service LLC in the amount of $180,000 with a total of 32 calendar days to complete. Funds are available in the water fund contract services line item and staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Counsel. You've heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item, please? There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second? Any discussion or questions? Councilman Gitts.
Okay, I'm trying to understand what this project is for and why it's necessary. Could someone talk to me about that?
I could try, but Bart will be better. So, for the Lawson, the, for the backfield canal.
Oh, why is it necessary?
Yeah.
Okay, years ago, we pumped water from Lawson's through a canal system to the water plant. So, that canal had silted up and at the time, Dr. Tome, when he was here, they put a pipeline in. With the pipeline in, this section of canal that was filled in was no longer in service. It was just sitting there. So, Dr. Tome made the decision that if we were doing projects on the north side of Beaumont and we had dirt and material left over from those, he directed city staff to go and dump that material in that old canal and fill it in with the premise that we might be able to use it for parking vehicles on if water was high or something along those lines. However, no permit was ever obtained from the Corps of Engineers or any of that to do that work. So, what happened was they were looking at aerial imagery, saw that the canal was filled in and contacted the city. Now, this has been going on a long time, like back to 2014 or further back. So, we just recently got the decision from the Corps that said, y'all need to go and pull all the material out of the canal and then put it back to the way, you know, nature had it in that section and then y'all are good at that point. So, we're under requirement to do this. We have to pull it out.
Let me, let me understand. We, your predecessor, without a permit, directed all of this spill to be put into this canal and now we've got to incur the cost of removing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all? Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I do have one. The alternate bid amount for the two of the vendors is less in the base bid than the alternate bid, but the recommended vendor has the alternate bid less than the base bid. That seems odd and.
Doesn't make a ton of sense to any of us either. The explanation from the vendor was that they preferred the structure of the alternate with, by bidding by cubic yard rather than the hours and that's why their bid on the base was so high. We've checked out their references. The references have checked out okay. We've contacted them. They're willing to perform an alternate bid for the price rendered. So, we recommend just moving forward.
What will happen to all this stuff that's dug out? Where will it go?
I believe it's all going to the landfill.
Okay.
Which is where it would have went anyway.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Like there's a motion and a second on the floor for item number three. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And we do have one work session today and Mr. Boone's gonna lead that for us, correct?
Good afternoon. The purpose of this discussion item is to review and discuss housing tax credit program applications being made to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs in the year 2021. As most of you are familiar with the process, we do this about every year at this time. The, and just a reminder, the purpose of the housing tax credit process is to provide affordable housing to a community. And the program does that, TDHCA does that by partnering with a private developer in order to make the project happen. And part of that is to provide equity in the form of the tax credits through that program. But of course, as you know, it's a competitive process at the TDHCA level. And so, that's what we're talking about today is the applications that have been made to the city. Briefly on the application process, again, the applications are due to the state from the developer beginning of March. Again, it's a competitive process. Depending upon council's, level of council support, different projects would receive different points in the scoring at the state level. And again, typically TDHCA will announce the awards in the summer and the projects ideally would start by next calendar year. In years past, it's, we've, in looking at the different options in terms of resolutions of support in years past, there's been the issue of two times, in other words, twice the per capita number of supported housing units in a community. It's our understanding that this, this round of HTC, that's not an issue for Beaumont. So, we're looking at other options of resolutions of support, no objection, funding support, which we've done in the past. We usually do in the form of fee waivers, which provides extra points for a project. And then finally, if a project is in a revitalization area, been designated by a plan, you can also receive additional points. Briefly, these are some projects that have been awarded in the past rounds, going back to 2011. Many of those you probably recognize. I will mention, just as following up from last year's round, two of the projects I believe were approved. One was Virginia Flats, which was the rehabilitation of the project there near Odom. And the other is Beaumont Trails, which is off of 11th Street. Also added to the discussion, because we have had the Harvey multifamily units come online, I wanted to add this list of approved projects. I believe four of the five are under construction currently. This is a map. The orange dots represent the, either projects that have been developed or have been approved, both the regular HTC rounds as well as the Harvey projects. The dots in blue represent the three projects that we're presenting to you today. I will go ahead and mention that we, as we do every year, are just gonna give a brief summary of each of the development applications. We have invited representatives from each applicant to be here to answer questions. So, I do believe each, each project has a representative here if you have any questions. The first project on our list is Piney Wood Villas. This is a development proposal from RealTex out of Austin, located at 1125 North 11th. It is proposed to be a 64-unit senior project. It's located here on 11th Street. It's a little hard to read, but it's the site of the former Castle Motel, I believe. And this is a rendering elevation of what, what they expect the project to roughly look like at that location. And this is just some examples of some projects that this developer has, has undertaken in other communities. This was in Pasadena. Looks like it's a two-story instead of three, but similar projects. And again, every develop, I think most of the developers that had submitted application provided a good amount of materials in terms of their firm's background as well as other projects they have done. So, this is just a sampling. And with that, are there any questions of Piney Wood Villas? I do believe Rick Dayo is with RealTex and I believe he is in the audience.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay. If not, I'll go on to the second one. Beaumont Pioneer Crossing, Beaumont Pioneer Crossing, a project by Betco Housing out of Austin. The proposed location is East Tex Freeway opposite TechDOT, 72 to 80 family units. And this is roughly the location of the proposed development. You can see the TechDOT offices opposite there, Old Voth Road being to the west. And again, proposed 72 to 80 family units. This is another example of a project they've done in Lufkin, Texas. And I believe Michael Beard with Betco is in the audience if there are any questions about Beaumont Pioneer Lofts.
Counsel?
And if not, the third and final application is Edson Lofts. This is Providence Realty out of Dallas, Texas, 285 Liberty. This is proposed to be 110-unit senior project. And this is the location. You're probably familiar, Liberty, Maine. This is the old Edson Hotel on the corner of Liberty and Pearl. So, it includes 284, 285 Liberty as well as 341 Pearl. This is just an example of some of the projects that this firm has done in terms of historic redevelopment. And this is the, obviously, the building in question and some photographs. And I believe Mark Feaster is here with Providence Realty in case there are any questions concerning this, this project.
Go ahead, please.
Is, uh.
Is this for, um.
Mr. Feaster.
For the representative referred, okay, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Feaster. Thank you for being here. I personally am very excited about this project because it offers the opportunity to breathe some residential life into downtown at one of the most prominent buildings that has been vacant for, for a very long time. Your company, is it true, did y'all do the Star Project, that building in Houston? Is that one of Providence's?
Yes, it is.
That's an impressive project. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Can you, can you elaborate a little bit more about what your company intends to do with this building? Should you get the grant?
Sure. Right, right now, we're projecting 110 units. It could be that we can increase that number. Once we, as you can see in that picture, I think it's up about three stories, at least two. Windows have been filled in and right now, our intention is to come back and open all of those windows up, which may open up some more units that, that we can put in there, so. Obviously, we'll comply with all the historic preservation rules that will be dictated to us. Probably, most of the amenities are gonna be located in the lower section and the old Wilson Building. But, you know, it will be the typical senior. We'll have meeting rooms, we'll have workout rooms. We're hopefully gonna be able to put a rooftop outdoor area on top of the Wilson Building that would have a gazebo and, and maybe an outdoor grill or, or something of that nature.
Wow, that's great. You know, or you may or may not be aware that the city of Beaumont recently completed a building downtown called the Lakeside Center that is geared, it's not designated only for seniors, but there's a big focus for seniors down there. And I can see a lot of, you know, symmetry there by having some people actually living downtown that are of that population, which, what constitutes a senior now?
Fifty-five and older.
So.
Hey, you can sign Mike up. Couple of us got a few more years, but.
Well.
I think Taylor's wrong.
I think, you know, beside that center, the, the new senior center is, has just been completed, I believe, in the last year or so. So, we intend to try to, to create as much synergy there as, as we can. This will actually be a mixed income. There will be a mixture of 30% and 60% and market rate units in it, so.
Okay, and so the, when you say affordable income, what actually is affordable income? As it, in terms of 80% of the earning standards?
We take the, the local AMI and unfortunately, I don't know that right off the top of my head. And then affordable, the 60% of that AMI is what's considered the affordable level. And then obviously, when we go down into the 50s and the 30s, it's that same. So, someone would have to be at 30% of the local AMI to qualify to live in the 30% units.
There's some confusion in the public about Section 8 vouchers and how that interacts with this. This is not that type of program, is it?
No, as, as Chris stated, it's, it's a public-private partnership with the state. They actually issue federal income tax credits based on the eligible costs in the product, or in the project. We then take those credits and go sell them to whoever needs them and that's how we raise the equity. We obviously raise more equity than the 20% or 25% that you typically see in these deals. And so, that's how we can entertain the lower rents. And with the credits comes the mandate from the state that you do maintain those lower rents for a period of 40 years.
How many years?
Forty.
Forty, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pete?
Do you wanna tell them, I've done some work with historical tax credits, but for the average person, they don't, may not know exactly how that works. Could you take just a moment to explain how that can affect you? Not just with the federal, but the state and any other historical tax credits, which allows you to do what you're trying to do.
Right. Yeah, our, our total project is, is probably gonna be in the neighborhood of $28 million to do the renovation. 110 units wouldn't support that in a, in a normal market scenario. The historic credits give us another avenue to raise equity as well as the federal credits. The state and the federal will allow up to 45% of eligible costs and give you that in federal tax credits that, again, we turn and sell. and give you that in federal tax credits that, again, we turn and sell to people that need the tax credits. So it's another form of equity in addition to the tax credit from TDHCA.
So you might even get ninety to ninety-five percent of the tax credits against somebody else's passive income?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, typically, they get sold in the ninety percent or ninety cents range, you know.
Well, it gives them a ten percent return.
Yep, yes.
Hard to beat.
Yes.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so again, these are the tax credit projects that have been submitted to the city for consideration. And as mentioned before, they've got to submit these applications up to the state by March. So we will look to be, the administration will look to be bringing forward for your consideration some resolutions, we believe. We just, we just need some guidance in the meantime. So we don't have to decide here today, but if you want to reach out to me and/or the manager moving forward, we can, we can get that feedback from counsel and then decide how to move forward. And with that, are there any other questions of me or any of the other applicants?
Counsel, anybody? Thank you so much, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
That concludes our general business in our work session. I will let everyone know, we did have an executive session posted today. However, it has been taken off of our agenda, so we will not have an executive session today. So I will now move to public comments. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. As mentioned earlier, if you would like to speak on any item, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room if you haven't already. Hand it to the officer, or we'll hand it to the city clerk. She will call out your name. Once more, we appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when you, when your time is up. Tony Prados, ten ninety Avenue H, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here basically to speak on the faith, Southeast Texas Faith and Community Leaders Group that we, that I'm a part of. And who are we? I know some of you may have already heard about this group, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about who we are and kind of what we do. For example, in 2019, we worked to help Harvey, excuse me, Harvey impacted families apply for homeowner assistance and reimbursement program. We helped Jefferson County lead the state with two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one applications. As a result, in December of 2019, HUD was awarded four billion dollars to assist Harvey survivors, including those in Jefferson County, I may lose my voice, I'm sorry, in Jefferson County. The past summer, a hundred and twelve homes were in progress for repairs. When COVID-19 impacted families in Beaumont, we advocated for households by partnering with some of the city to create a rental and utility assistance fund. As a result, the city of Beaumont voted to include a hundred and forty thousand for food assistance to local and food pantries, four hundred thousand for homeless shelter repairs, six hundred thousand toward a rental and utility assistance funds to help two hundred to five hundred households that were back in rent, had rent and utility owed. So the group had invited mayor and city managers to participate in a question and answer program. But y'all didn't show up, but still, y'all sent Chris Boone, which Chris did, threw a bunch of numbers at us. And we still want to know, at six point five million dollars to keep people in their homes, and the city, you all got twenty percent of that fund. So in that twenty percent, which is one point three billion dollars, what happened to the five point two billion dollars that's still left on the table so that could help people in their homes? So my thing is, basically, we're here to help the moratorium, which has been expanded, to help people stay in their home. So we're trying to figure out what is, where's the rest of the money? He did come and talk to us, like I said, and threw around an awful lot of figures. So now, there's also another large pocket of money that will be coming to the city. Using the CARES Act, we recommended that the city use CARES Act instead of just going through the CDBG funds. Because the CDBG have, their application is stronger, more difficult to fill out, but the CARES Act is a lot easier for us to use. So we're asking you all to consider using the CARES Act when you apply for this next six point five billion. And we need to know where that money is and where it's going.
Thank you, Ms. Prados.
It's not a posted item, so we can't, Chris was going to answer your questions, but what I actually had in my notes for the end of the meeting, a couple of comments regarding that. It might not answer all your questions, Ms. Pate Prados, because I don't have any in front of me, but I will when I get to it. But this is not a posted item, so we can't have a give and take. I apologize, okay?
Eddie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, council, city manager in his absence. I want to stand at the podium, um, crisis, great COVID. Can you hear me?
Would you like to have that microphone?
No, no.
We can hear you. The TV might not be able to, but please go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. And my condolences to you, mayor.
Thank you.
I'm standing here because I've been coming since February. In May, I started talking about an issue on weed abatement. And I have letters here, and I prepared a packet if there's any council members that would be interested in what I've been going through. But bottom line, I have a letter to city manager recapping everything that's happened. In May, there was a letter sent out by Collections, by Collections. I sent a letter to Ms. Foot, July the twenty-seventeenth, July twenty-fifth, August tenth. I was reported for non-compliance to the Municipal Service Bureau. And there was a letter to the city manager, December second. And at this point, I'm asking whoever is Ward Three, I think that's you, Ward Three, I'm asking the at-large, my ward person, to help me with this. Mayor, the weed abatement ordinance states that the dates of service should be on the collection notice. There are no dates. I have continuously asked for it. The city manager on November twenty-fourth asked Ms. Foot and Mr. Chris Boone to get with me, provide that information, still has not been provided. I would kindly ask you, I pay taxes on this property, and I know other people have gotten these weed abatement notices that from August nineteenth to February twentieth, there were no notices sent out. Y'all were having problems. I was here in May when you got the new system. So if you go and buy groceries, you have an itemized list. All I'm asking, I'll pay it if it's due, but I need to know the dates that the cuts were made. I don't know why that's so hard, but kindly, if you'll provide that. I'll pay the hundred eighty-four dollars, but I have cutters as well. So I keep records. My cutters are paid through money order, whatever, that's insignificant. But let's have a meeting of the mind and get this straight. I don't want my credit affected. It's already been sent to the bureau. And in the ordinance, it says you can have an administrative hearing. I'd like one, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Ms. Allen, what is your address?
Ten six, uh, they're charging ten, ten, so why?
That's the address of the weeds, yeah.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak today?
Okay, if not, I will move to council member comments. And I'll start with you. I forgot where I started last week, but I'll start with you, Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, mayor. No comment today.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
No comment, mayor.
Councilmember Pate.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I talk over and over again about how many great people we have at the community. And I meant to mention this last week, but one of those great guys who did a lot of work, was an outstanding architect and did a lot of work for the city. Charlie Thompson, who was a fine gentleman and an exceptional architect, worked with us on many projects. I believe he even did our CVB Bureau building. A great guy, and it's a real loss that he passed. In addition, we have a lot of other people who have spent a lot of time serving the community that are retiring. Brent Weaver, county commissioner, has spent literally decades serving our community, and we want to tell him that we appreciate, I want to tell him how much we appreciate the effort that he put forth on behalf of our community. And also, Dr. Ken Evans, as you may know, has decided to retire from Lamar University. Dr. Evans came here in 2013, and I think when you look around and see a lot of the things that transpired under his leadership, the enrollment, new buildings, Dr. Evans has done an exceptional job, and we really appreciate what he's done for our university. You've heard me say this before, every community of a hundred and twenty thousand doesn't have a university like Lamar. Doesn't have a university at all. And so we're very fortunate to have a university here. We're very fortunate to have had some outstanding presidents who have done a great job, and certainly, Dr. Evans falls in that category. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember.
No comment, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to confirm that next Tuesday will be our first night meeting.
Yes, it will.
Thank you. Next thing, I know we're running out of time.
Well, not our first, but in this series, yes.
Correct, thank you. We're running out of time to make sure we get these charter changes put on the ballot for the May twenty-twenty-one election. And I would just like to request that next Tuesday, we have a workshop on the charter changes that we'll be proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I had a citizen contact me about our method of COVID distribution that is anticipated on happening here in Beaumont. This particular senior citizen drove to Houston to have his vaccine administered. And all of their procedures were drive-through. You didn't have to walk into a building. You didn't even have to get out of your car. You pulled up to a tent, you pulled under the tent in your car, and you could just roll your sleeve up, have the vaccine administered, and then drive off to another place in the parking lot and wait the required time for the results. And, not the results, but you had to, you had to wait there for a period of time after the vaccine was administered to see if you had a reaction of some sort. And, you know, that is something that he favored very much as opposed to having to come into a facility. So I don't know if it's possible for us to have something like that done here in Beaumont as opposed to, I saw that you had set up the, directed that the Civic Center be set up to do this. I don't know if this would be more desirable, but he certainly thought it would be, and so I thought I would mention that. The second thing I want to talk about is, because we are now in the campaign season, we have a, we have an ordinance on our books that my research seems to indicate is very likely unconstitutional and cannot be enforced in terms of placement of campaign signs. I had sent out a request to have a workshop to discuss this. I've never heard back about that, but I would like to have a workshop on this at the next council meeting to be able to discuss what the city will and will not permit in terms of campaign signs and as far as when they can be placed, what's the earliest they can be placed so that there's not any confusion out there in the public. And, you know, if we can have a workshop on that, and if I could get a second from a council member on that to make that happen, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, that's everyone. Well, first, some of the things you mentioned are not up for discussion, councilmember Gatz, but I will make a few comments regarding the drive-through. And, you know, I will tell you that first, you have to have the vaccines to give them, and we don't. But as far as Harris County is concerned, as I understand it, they got several grants which we're working to get. Drive-throughs take much more personnel than individuals walking into a facility. But I will tell you, and I'll go into that in a minute, but I will tell you that I can't speak for everywhere, but we have not started using our Civic Center yet because we don't have enough vaccines to use it. If we continue to get the small amount like we've been getting, we can do upper two hundred a day right in our health department. I know someone who went to that, an elderly person, that told me it was so safe. The social distancing was perfect. It was very, very organized. Now, I'm not saying we won't do drive-throughs. We may at some point, but right now, quite frankly, we do not have the personnel to do that. As you mentioned, they went to a tent, because we got everything that Harris County did, and the personnel that it took is astronomical. You have to watch the person after the vaccine for fifteen minutes if they don't have any underlying conditions. If they have underlying conditions, you have to watch the person for thirty minutes. That is the issue. If it were just driving through and getting the vaccine and leaving, that wouldn't be an issue, but the issue is the requirement. Now, I do understand also that some of the drive-throughs are not adhering to that requirement, but we're going to adhere to the requirements as we're given through the CDC here in Beaumont. So that's, but like I said, I'm not saying it's not coming. I keep saying that what I believe will probably happen is if everyone will recall back in March when all this started, there was a lot of confusion. There was a lot of individuals who wanted to be tested, and the tests were scarce. There were different, all different types of obstacles that we had to go through for that testing. And then we ended up partnering with the county and with Port Arthur and doing the testing out at the airport. And after that, though, that was a month or two that went by. After that, a lot of private started getting them, you know, it opened up a lot. So I do believe that that will happen as well. It might take a couple of months, but I do think it will get better. Understanding what is required to us is difficult because we're dealing both with DISHers and TDM, and they're both working really hard and people are working around the clock. But this is a huge undertaking because this is nationwide. And so sometimes we'll get incorrect information, sometimes we don't. But we are constantly, actually, before we came in this meeting, that's where I was, and we were constantly trying to work through, working with those different departments within the state to understand what's required of us as far as how we get vaccines, et cetera, et cetera, if they're going to come through the county, if they're going to come directly to us. I will let everyone know that as of today, we're in like week seven of this, I believe. I believe it's seven. If anybody's out there that knows, correct me. It's six or seven. But we have received specifically for the city of Beaumont, one hundred vaccines, and that is the truth. Okay, so we have asked for them, and so it's confusing on what happens with them once they get here. The county, Jefferson County, our county, did get nineteen hundred and fifty early this week that were supposed to come last week, and they got another nineteen fifty yesterday. I did speak with the judge, and we are getting I did, um, speak with the judge and we are getting some for the city of Beaumont through that allocation. And it's a substantial amount. Um, we're getting different amounts each day. Today is not very many, but it does ramp up toward the end of the week. And, um, so therefore, but that's only nineteen fifty. We have twenty thousand people in the city of Beaumont that have pre-registered, just so y'all know. So, um, this is huge. We are working through it. Understand if you get calls that, uh, council, if you get calls of people that would like drive-throughs. I can't commit to that right now, but we will work toward it if it's, if it's possible for us to do. We're a much smaller city than, uh, Houston and we're a much smaller county than Harris and Tarrant. So, um, but with that said, I want to make a few comments because it's very important and because I've gotten some calls about three-one-one being jammed. Yes, three-one-one is jammed. I did send out a press release last week and asked that no one call three-one-one any longer. Three-one-one was used in the beginning for a waitlist for our pre-registration as it was being built, uh, online and our call center was being set up. So please do not call three-one-one to put yourself on a waitlist any longer. That was the case for the last, uh, two to three weeks, but that is no longer the case. That was a waitlist only, that was not a pre-registration. Um, we did have a press conference yesterday. The, um, Southeast Texas Regional Emergency Operations is five different counties that came together, um, earlier this, you were late last year, last year, excuse me, um, to, uh, better serve individuals because we feel like we're stronger in numbers. And we did have a press conference yesterday. And, um, I want to thank, um, our staff, the city of Beaumont, because we did build the, um, portal or the online system for all the five counties, um, that are involved in the Southeast Texas Emergency Operations. And that was talked about yesterday. That is why when you see, um, the registration that I'm getting ready to give you, and I'm going to show you where you can find that, so don't hurry, try to jot it down. I'm going to show you where all the information is. It's vaccine.beaumonttexas.gov. That's for the five county area. There is a dropdown that asks what city that you live in. However, that is pre-registration. Once we start getting more vaccines in and we start notifying individuals, whether it be by email, text, or blackboard, um, then you will go back on again and say where you want to take the vaccine. Because you live in Jasper and you work in Beaumont, you might want to take it in Beaumont or vice versa, and that is available. That is not an issue. Uh, we are working through this, uh, the region, not just in our city. So, but what we are doing right now is pre-registration. And it's vaccine.beaumonttexas.gov, not three-one-one, no longer three-one-one. We had some sewer issues la, um, yesterday. We had a thousand calls within about four to five hours yesterday for vaccine registration on three-one-one. And we typically get nine thousand calls in a month. And we had a thousand in that short period after we had put out, please don't call three-one-one anymore. We're no longer taking the waitlist, we're actually, actually pre-registering. So please don't call three-one-one. It's vaccine.beaumonttexas.gov. Or if you don't have, uh, availability either by your smartphone, uh, your, um, iPad, your computer or whatever to go online and register, there is also a phone number, but that is going to be harder to get through. We have a very large call center set up. But it's, um, but there are a lot of people calling, twenty thousand in the last few days. So it's four zero nine five five zero two five three six. Four zero nine five five zero two five three six. That is if you don't have access to online capability. Cause that would be the best bet to do. It's very easy. But as I mentioned, if you don't hear from anyone for a while, then don't think that you're not still registered. You will be, but until we start getting an abundance of vaccines in, we're not going to be able to notify people, um, to go in and finish their registration. And to finish their registration, it's basically to say where you're going to take, what, um, uh, what area you're going to take the vaccine in or what city. So, um, with that said, the city of Beaumont website is beaumonttexas.gov. If you go onto the website, this is on your smartphone. It looks a bit, little bit different on your, um, on your computer or your PC. But the very top blue line has COVID-19 vaccine information. If you go on there, it's going to give you the website I just gave you. It's also going to give you the phone number, not three-one-one. It even says in there, please don't call three-one-one, we're no longer using that. We are only using that on the interim to keep a waitlist. If you, um, were on the waitlist, you still were transferred over to the website. But if you feel more comfortable, you can certainly go on the website. The next thing is, the second blue line is, uh, for the daily COVID-19 update that I have been putting out since March nineteenth, I believe. And we do that every day. Uh, now it's only five days a week and we do, uh, Saturday and Sunday. On Monday, we were doing it seven, but we've gone to five now. But it is still there if you want to see the numbers. If you want to see the numbers in the different cities and the different jurisdictions, et cetera, you can see those numbers, you can see, um, where we are as a city. By the way, we do have two ICU beds available in Beaumont that, when I checked before this meeting, which is pretty low, but we're not as bad as we were, but we're still not great. We're still well above the threshold of the governor's rollback. I believe we're at twenty-one percent. And then the third line says COVID-19 rental and utility assistance. We still have an abundance of dollars in that, um, in that fund. And, um, I believe Ms. Prados was talking about that earlier. So if you are about to be evicted or if you haven't paid your rent, you need to go on to there or have someone help you with that. Or you can always go to a library, we have computers available there. And we have libraries throughout the city, as y'all know, COVID-19 rental and utility assistance, and you can apply for that. And, um, so if you, and as I understand it from Mr. Boone, there's money in there, but there's also getting, we're getting ready to put more money in there. It's about six hundred thousand dollars and there is still about that much in there, correct? If I'm rounding right? You want, go ahead. Mm-hmm, sure.
So we have approximately half of the six hundred thousand dollars left.
The original, okay.
And then we're about to request an additional six hundred and eighty-nine thousand from council for another batch of money.
Okay.
So for Beaumont.
And that came through the CARES Act, through the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission?
Um, it was from CARES Act through HUD.
HUD, okay.
So CARES Act one and CARES Act, uh, well, CARES Act one.
Okay.
So all that is through HUD. And for Beaumont residents who have been affected by the pandemic economically.
Exactly. And they have to be able to, to get this rental assistance, they have to be able to prove that they were affected. You can't just sign up and say, I need rent money. You've got to have that documentation.
Correct. You need documentation, there's income limitations. So there are some, but, uh, there are of course rules, but those rules are outlined on the, uh, the third tab that you mentioned.
Okay. And, um, yeah, uh, it's not for discussion, but if it's something you can make a statement, maybe we can see if it will work.
Just a question.
Cause I know it's important.
When will, uh, the additional funds be deposited and available?
So we are going to request, currently we have.
There's still some, quite a bit in there.
We currently have funds available, so we do encourage folks to continue to apply. Um, but we will be bringing the request for additional funding to council. Um, at this time, we're planning for, um, February ninth, so two weeks from today.
But there is, we've not run out from the very beginning, we've not run out of funding.
That's right.
As far as the other dollars that were talked about, there are, uh, there are dollars that we get through the CARE Act that are specified for certain type, um, of, um, uses. And so we are working through that. Um, and I think that's some of the questions that a lot of people have and we have some of the same questions. So, um, kind of like, uh, COVID-19, but, um, but please know that we're, we're working through this process. Um, we do expect to start getting some vaccines in. I do not believe that it's going to be like five thousand a week or anything like that, which is, would be nice, because that's probably about what we'd like to have or at least a thousand a week would be good. But I do understand through, um, our public health director that, uh, the county did commit to give us some each day this week. Um, and it's a substantial amount, um, small, and then it gets larger. And, um, because they did get another nineteen hundred and fifty yesterday and I believe we got three seventy-five out of their first allocation of nineteen fifty. Because some say that that's how it's set up, that you receive it through your counties. However, I know Port Arthur has gotten some separately. So we are trying to, um, understand how that process works. But we are doing everything that we are supposed to do. We honestly believe that the state is just working through it so quickly. There are some counties and cities who've not gotten any. So, um, with that said, um, there is limited resources too of these vaccines. As I understand it, the allocations that have been, um, stated will continue through these weeks. I can't say that for sure, because until you get it, you don't really know. But, um, I understand that that's the case, but it's not like, um, I know that we read in the media all the time what we're being told by the state. Uh, we read a lot that there's some just sitting on shelves. They are saying that is not the case, that the allocations that we are getting now are coming straight from the manufacturer. I know that that part is true. Moderna and Pfizer and, because there's two different kinds right now, and they are coming straight to us from there. They don't go through the state, but the state does allocate. Um, thirdly, we do believe that if the Johnson and Johnson vaccine gets approved as it's projected to be, uh, as an emergency use in the middle of February, that they may be available at the end of February. That's substantial because the Johnson and Johnson is a one dose, one-shot vaccine. Therefore, if you get five hundred, you get five hundred. Now, if we get five hundred, it's like two fifty because you have to have a second shot and they are the same, same formula for the first and second shot. We don't hold any back for the second shot. What, when I talk about allocations, like the county getting nineteen fifty or us getting a hundred or Port Arthur getting three hundred or wherever, those are meant to be first shots. When, um, we get to the twenty-one day for Pfizer or the twenty-eight day for Moderna, when the second shot is supposed to happen, then we get an email from the state saying that we will receive those hundred or whatever it is that are up then. So when I, we talk about numbers, those are first shots. The second shots are not included in the allocations because they're a two-shot, um, vaccine. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. Hopefully, um, it will be reported on because, um, we really need to let, um, our individuals know, please don't call three-one-one anymore regarding the vaccine, please. Because it does tie up the lines for people that are trying to call for other issues and they get very frustrated. Um, but with, um, a thousand calls in a four or five hour period, when we're used to nine thousand in a whole month, it's hard to manage. But we do have a separate call center with that number that I gave you earlier, five five oh two five three six. But the better way to do it, to pre-register for the vaccine is go to vaccine.beaumonttexas.gov. And that is all on our website with even more information. Okay. Thank y'all. That's all I have. We don't have an executive session, so, uh, we are now adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming and be safe.